Meeting. To order all the March 21st. Regular meeting to order if everyone. Believe in.
Just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There any public comment? One. Okay. All the comments is closed. Do have a relative work because we're heading off to the present budget board of finance. So we're going to try to keep things moving along rather quickly if we can. Versus the approval. Seventh meeting. Does anyone have any? adjustments? Motion.
March 7.
Seconds, any further discussion? No, all the favor. Pose. Stain. Good, so motion pass or minutes. Okay. No special reports today, no consent agenda, so we're on to discussion and action items. And the first one is the healthy food certification statement that we do each year. And.
Yes, Mr. Urban is here. This is our yearly responsibility to make sure that these two items, this agenda item and the next one are brought before the board. Chris, yeah, go ahead, could be a quick overview again, just so everybody remembers.
Yeah, it's our yearly Connecticut healthy food certification. The first action item is for the school to be part of the healthy food certification. It does open up a little more funding from the federal government. And the federal government guidelines are so close to the Connecticut healthy food certification guidelines now that they're essentially the same thing. But they're still offering the same benefits if the school is part of that program. And then the second part is for a waiver so that you're allowed to have special event functions for football games or dances or special events for school where you could still have the fun regular stuff. And it wouldn't be a violation of the healthy food certifications.
Does any? Questions?
I want to make a motion to approve the proposed 2022, 2023 healthy food certification statement, healthy food option pursuant to Connecticut general statute, section 1020.5F, the Board of Education or governing authority certifies that all food items offered for sale to students under the restrictions and not accepted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education. Will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023. The certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reversible meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any farm-raising activities on the premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Jamie, do I hear a second? I guess. Further discussion?
I have a question about including but not limited to school stores vending machines. Not limited. I'm not quite processing this language, so does that mean our vending machines are?
Everything has to be in the Connecticut. Yeah, on their list of approved items. And that's what our machines are.
Okay, okay. Because I know previously, not necessarily here, but other places where I've worked. Not healthy food that was in.
No, they have to, everything has to be on the certified Connecticut list. And the vendor has to go by that list. We also audit the machines. And when the state actually favored it back, they'll actually have to check.
I just didn't know what you're doing.
Yeah, we don't have any soda machines or gatorade machines or.
Kind of comes into the next one with beverages.
I just have to know, is there any candy machines? No more?
There hasn't been candy machine.
I think for a while, I didn't, but I didn't know, so we're totally, we're totally prepared.
Like they can have them in the teacher's lounge.
But the kids can't go into the teacher's lounge.
No, but I don't think we have any.
No.
I didn't think, I didn't think so, but I was just checking.
Actually, it's to be allowed to be in the locker room.
Soda machines?
Yeah.
That's amazing. Okay, just.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stain. Passes unanimously. E. Which you already discussed, so it's us making the motion again.
Yeah.
This one's longer. This one's longer.
I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed 2022, 2023 healthy food certification statement, healthy food exceptions. The Board of Education or governing authority will allow the sale of students, sale, not sale of students, the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards and beverages not listed in section 10221Q of the Connecticut general statute, provided that the following conditions are met. The sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. The sale is at the the sale is at the location of the event, the food and beverage items not sold from vending machine or school store. That involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice meeting or activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and classic debates or events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate meetings are not. The regular school game is a period from midnight before to 30 minutes after. Is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the beverage sales.
Anyone want a second?
I'll second.
Thanks. Further discussion?
Well, again, I'm just wondering about when there are plays and performances and things, parents who bring in things, and those are for sale.
Yeah, those are allowed, and that's what this is for, it's you giving them a waiver that allows them to have things that's special events. But it has to be against special events only, they can't. The kids can't bring in a box of candy bars to sell them for a fundraiser. It would have to be a special event where they're allowed to buy these things. And it goes also with the fundraising where the students aren't allowed to actually interact with the fundraising either. So like, I know the middle school sells butter butter breads, which parents actually have to come pick them up. The students don't bring them home on the bus. It's, it's, there's rules.
Combination. Beverage and food.
That would be. Is that combined? I think.
You scroll that right before and it say option to combine food and beverage. Now in motion language. That's.
Questions? All those in favor? Aye.
We'll be back next March. Yeah, yeah. Every year, every year.
So the next topic is the draft charter for the Facilities Asset Management Committee. I recall, we did discuss this at the last meeting as a discussion topic. So everybody had a cancel later review the charter and I don't know if you had any, got any feedback? No, no other, no other feedback other than what we talked about the last board of ed meeting. Any other comments or discussion?
I'd like to read that, but I think this is very separate. Could be the effort of all our committees, because it specifically establishes a conduit from the committee to the Board of Education. That conduit is not in existence for our committees and will say that we should review all of our committees and make sure that there was a conduit from the committee to the Board. I can comment, I have a message, a question about why we have the draft and the point of this charter, if it's the
And as soon as you approve it, we'll take draft off. But it's not approved yet, so it's still a draft one.
So we approve in the final one?
This is the final draft that the board of ed is reviewing and will make a motion hopefully to approve it. Once approved, the draft runs on.
Other questions?
I kind of felt like the language was ambiguous and I don't even really know how to say it because I felt like I didn't really understand what was going to be the outcome of it. Other than there's some history involved with it. I, I, I didn't know who wrote it, but I just think it could have been written better with better, greater clarity for what the focus, the operations and the outcomes would be, so.
Dr. Lund wrote it. I think he did a phenomenal job with it because it clearly articulates the point of this committee, Kate, is to ensure that we are continuing to take a hard look at facility items that are out there that need takes in the pool group is the first item we see online here. So we have a funneling of discussion, bring it to the board and there's going to be plans that are going to need discussion.
I understand what you just said, but I don't, that's not clear how this was written, my opinion. And I come from a school district where buildings were 100 years old, so knowing the ages of the buildings and some of that, anyway, just my comment, I think it could have been better written. I know it's intended by, by, you know, some of the words, you know, the clarity of that. And I didn't know, again, I didn't know who wrote it, so I didn't mean anything by that, so I apologize.
There any language that you?
I would have to work on it.
Okay.
I didn't do an edit and rewrite on it, and I didn't know that was my, forgive.
Other questions?
I thought it was great. Working into this. On my head of that, I like that we got rid of the ad hoc committee. That's ongoing and not just a temporary thing. It was, yeah.
Yeah, we got rid of.
I said, I like that it says.
That came up in the last meeting.
Sorry. I like that you made it a subcommittee, you got rid of the ad hoc part of it.
Thanks. One, my one comment, I like the partnership with FFO because and some of these decisions will go hand in hand with FFO. Anyone?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the draft charter for the Facilities Asset Management Committee as presented.
Second.
My second.
Favor?
That's different saying. Because what we're saying, this is probably this is a charter that we're proving we're going to be going by. There's no wiggle in the math.
That's what you just, Kate just brought up, one of potentially wanting to change, that's why we bring this draft. We can talk about that, it's, I think it's, man, I understand what you're saying, but we've always brought, you know, the board, until the board approves it, it is a draft. We can do it any way you, you would like to do it.
So I, so I made the motion draft charter and I'm not going to change it, but the question is, is once something becomes a charter, we can always come back and talk around if you would like to change the language again, correct?
Absolutely.
What would be come back to us to?
Yeah, absolutely approved again.
Okay, so we had a motion, we had a second, going back to, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Stain. Okay, the charter has been approved and Jeff, I think we also had asked for the volunteers to join, I know Bill was definitely going to be.
Yeah, Bill. Lisa, it was interesting taking part as well, so better.
Okay.
Thanks, Lisa. So we'll get rolling with that pretty quick.
Can I just go sit beyond the committee? I know it's board members. Then Steph.
It'll be Mr. Lund, we might bring in principal if it's a specific building itself, you know, Lisa or Mariana.
So it sounds like the, it'll always be changing in the sense of.
Okay.
But the core would be Chris, Lisa, Bill.
Exactly.
Or if I, we can all attend if we want.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right, I just want, I mean, I know you can't talk.
And with only, no, well, with only two board members, you know, you can have a couple people attend and contribute as long as, once we hit six, then.
We're dead, we're dead to water, yeah.
Then, then it's, we're public and can't comment.
Okay, thanks.
And then next topic is the sister mural project.
Yeah, so we just want to bring this up for some information as there's been some murals done, I'm sure you're aware of Norwich, some other towns as well. Brought before the town, the board selectmen. Ultimately, they decided that they did not want to put a mural on, on the side of a building or anywhere, you know, in town. So it has come to the attention of the district and we're looking at, the, the school buildings are town built, so we're looking at a direction of potentially putting it on canvas and having a nice canvas mural done, which could be transported between buildings and be used and displayed at different EI events, things that are occurring rather than having a fixed, you know, mural somewhere in one building sort of thing. So that is, is where we're at right now, I think Jason Debeau, who's a very nice individual and has been kind of spearheading this. He's been working, you know, a little bit with Henry Kidd, myself, corresponding by email. We've had a few students that helped support the mural of Norwich and the creation of that mural. There's artists out there that are ready to, you know, to work with some of our students and like work with some of our students. So there was a depiction of what the mural might, did you look like, that you kind of saw? It's kind of small, but that's what we have for right now, I'm sure we can get, you know, more, you know, working Henry and Dev company as well as Jason Debeau if necessary, but again, it was just a depiction of what some thoughts were. We work with the artists and that's kind of where we're at, want to make sure, bring it to the board's attention. And then I can get back to Jason as necessary to let him know if, if we're interested as a district in, you know, putting this on some canvas. Some things are canvas. Jill?
Okay, so there's going to be a panel or a canvas, excuse me, a panel of a canvas on each elementary school.
No, no, it'd be one canvas, one can, large canvas painting that could be transported to different buildings to be used or displayed if there's an event that might be.
Okay, so the all three of these, because it's a school, one school.
I think it was just different versions of.
Okay.
One of those pictures, there's three different versions there.
Okay.
So there's some different rendition, renditions of what the, one of the artists had proposed.
Okay, it was a school three thing that threw me.
Yeah. Yeah.
I love the colors.
So that's, yeah, that's the thought. Be great to display at different events. Across the districts.
Came up with the theme books.
I don't know, do you know where that theme came from or have you happened to mention that?
I think it's the person that did the drawing itself, kind of pulled from different aspects of, you know, what makes East Line, East Line was the book bar.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, the book bar.
Sure.
They're depicting that here was the advocate of the underground railroad. And his name is Ruggles, and he was the first black owner of a bookstore here in.
Oh, wow.
East Line, so I think what the depiction here is an intent to bring the history of East Line forward by celebrating the role that Mr. Ruggles played, not only in front of the world, but also being one of the first black owners of the bookstore in the town. I think that's, that's the surprise in the picture.
Thank you, very thank you. Do we know, so will there be, because I didn't know that history and I appreciate that, will there be some mural or something that kind of gives that something, history?
That I don't know, I've not seen that on any of the.
That would be real, I mean, what you just said is, is kind of bring this much more to life than just seeing this picture.
That students captured that history, that kind of aligns with what you're saying.
Yeah. And we could try and create something too.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would be.
Yeah, because that really caught me when you said that.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
That's amazing piece of East Line history.
Yeah, brings it to life rather than just being a picture. Yeah.
Well, it's interesting, the first African-American bookseller in the United States, you know, so he's nationally renowned and then from the area, line in Norwich, so amazing. I interviewed her, she was on my television show, if anyone wants to look it up, stories worth telling. She's been one of my guests previously, a woman who's been behind the steering wheel of it. Jason's going to guess how much that is.
Yeah.
So it's a great project.
So I'm happy to reach out to Jason and talk to him about the size of the canvas and how we can, it could be two canvas pieces together to make it larger, can be rolled up and taken and then hung and displayed.
I think that's the vision, I think that's, yeah, I think that's what their vision was. Extremely creative as a person, Jason, I think, he's an artist himself in many ways.
Oh, my gosh.
Seems like a very nice gentleman, yeah.
He's an amazing artist.
I actually think the portability is, is actually a positive reason. Now, whenever there's the AI, the AI event, we can move it there and then you put it at schools, one month in this school, one month another, so I think that actually plus versus just having one school and one painting, so I think that's real good.
I have a question about any, in which place would we require
We can craft it, I'm sure, you know, to Chris or, you know, whoever is creating the top part of the canvas where it either has hooks or it could be, maybe that we figure something out to make sure, yeah. Yeah, exactly, we'll make sure that when it's created.
The site to hang it on.
Yeah, it would be framed, it's a framed canvas, I have one at home that somebody did for me that some of the our Capitol building and I was to offer that to you, Jeff, if you want, but that's someplace after that or middle school, whatever. It's a large canvas, you know, so you feel like you are there for the Capitol building, but it would be that same kind of thing. Like the size of the window, if that makes sense, and it's a wooden frame behind it. The canvas stretched over it and then they're painted on, if that makes sense.
That's what I was envisioning, stretched over a wooden, it's a tight fitting.
Yep.
You know, painted canvas, it's not kind of hanging loosely, it's, you know, it really.
So you can mount it on something.
Yeah, you could rest it up again, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But I do have the Washington Capitol building like that.
Yeah, sure.
Sir, questions?
No, I think we should move ahead full steam.
Candace, or do we need to make sure?
Thank you, I don't have any questions, I love the fact that it's portable. So the fact that they, I guess, decided space on a town building, not so much. I think that it's going to be for the behoove of the whole entire project to have more of a portable mural. And I love the, the backstory on that, so I think that that should be notable along with the painting.
Honestly, I, yeah, I just echo that, I'm just, I'm very grateful that, you know, we were figuring out a way to kind of overcome the barrier of not being able to use a town building and I think the, the fact that it's going to be portable is going to benefit even more students. So very excited and for this to move forward.
Barrett, can I just add that I think the first spot should be right in the boardroom, right in the BOE boardroom? Because I'm looking at all of you and I keep saying to Jeff that I just love to have this painting in back of us, so I think that maybe it could start its life journey there.
Thanks, Candace. The gray is better than the green, but it's still just gray. Yes, that would be nice. And then everyone, for the millions at home who are watching. So.
This is not basketball.
Okay, so this was just a discussion item, I think we got, you got what you need.
Yeah, definitely, I'll be back, we'll start proceeding forward. Get it rolling.
And then the last discussion topic for the have a board of ed retreat topics and strategic planning, if you recall, we have board of, on the board of ed night, April 11th, we've kind of tried to lock that up to be our board retreat. I think Jack sent I think every email to, I think everyone is able to mostly in person, there might be one or two virtually, but good, so this is a chance, you know, as I see it, I'll turn it over to I say, this is a chance, you know, every time as a board, we go through an election, we have new people on the board. So it's good to come together as, as a new team to see, you know, what do we want to focus on, what are we going to drive, what do we see? You know, how do we want to function, operate as a board? We do have a cave representative who is going to help facilitate the discussion.
Who's that?
Nick Caruso.
Who is he?
Nick Caruso. He's done many, many different.
He does a lot of seminars.
Yeah, it's what is kind of one of his roles at KABIS.
Nick Caruso?
Nick Caruso. No, no.
Yeah, no, no.
Go right to the KAB website, he's director of planning and I forget his exact title, but he's right on the website for KAB. Nice gentleman, been around for many, many years.
Is he, is he experienced in education?
Yes. Yep, and again, he done work for KAB for many, many years and is.
And if, if you recall, we had retreats before where we had the attorney come in and kind of go through what our, our roles and rules of as being board event members are. We don't, we're, that's not the purpose of this one.
What is the purpose?
So the purpose is again to want to talk about how we function as, as a, as a board of ed, but also think about what are the key topics, discussion topics that we want to help drive over the coming few years. And just start having some of those discussions that we make sure we get those, you know, on the agendas and help progress, best progress the district.
Really yet, I need to check on that, he didn't mention price yet, I have to circle back, I just wanted to see if he was available on that date and that's as far as we got, because I knew we were coming back to the board for discussions. So I'm not sure yet, I'll talk to him.
Will we have any new or agenda or ideas for how we want to run the retreat? new or agenda or ideas for how we want to run the retreat?
We haven't, again, haven't gotten that far. It's something that, you know, we polled the board, we've got the date, I think, pretty much locked in. Check with Nick. He's available. That will be the next step to talk to him now about what exactly we just mentioned, you know, kind of two folds. Um, board, uh, you know, relations and responsibilities as well as strategic planning and starting to think about that. Those are the two topics.
I think it's very important that we get, uh, some discussion with him as to what his purpose is and what his ideas are.
That's the plan.
He's, uh, had many experiences with facilitators coming into boards with their own agenda and with a template that, uh, is very modernized, very general and, uh, it just is not customized.
I'm sure.
On particular needs and focus, the background, history and the context of the board they're working. So, uh, I think it's very important that before we start out with the, the, uh, finding for the retreat, that we get, uh, pretty specific conversations with him in terms of the template and format that he would use for the evening.
Yep.
Absolutely, you know, a hundred percent. We, that is definitely part of what we need to do and one of, uh, so one of the things right now, um, and I'm hoping we can also start having, first, it's only March 21st, just start brainstorming on some of the things that, topics that we may want to cover and go through. We'll have time to refine that over the coming weeks, but thought we could use a little time now to just brainstorm and get some ideas. So we can start shaping it for us and for Nick of what we want to hope to do and accomplish.
I just want to share this with you with, uh, historically, I'm sure Jamie was there. I think maybe Laura might have been on the board, but we had a K, uh, a K person commit facilitate and he, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, I didn't feel very facilitated.
Yep.
It was more of a lecture of, this is, and it was, I was, uh, I was hoping it was more of, are you going to, we need to facilitate discussion between all of us. I don't need to be lectured by someone and tell me how to do. It was, it was, it was not a good experience in that our chair, our superintendent at the time knew him and it just, it, it didn't get over well. So that's why.
Pardon?
I'm not going to share that, but it was a time when she and I were on, maybe Laura was on, and it wasn't successful. So that's why you, you're seeing hesitancy with me. I mean, I'm assuming he's going to come and lecture me about what it is to be a good board member. But maybe, I mean, so I'm not.
So.
Thank you, Jamie.
So if we end up, I mean, that's kind of what we've done before. We're legal, you know, Jessica come.
No, this was horrible.
Okay. But I don't think that's what, that's not, at least that's not what I'm seeing that we need to do. So I think, um, that we need to have a conversation with Nick and if, and if he ends up not the right person, and this isn't his, you know, that he, if he has a model, uh, and I've seen that plenty where, you know, here you come in and this is, yeah, yeah, great. And you told me what I do, but here's my playbook and I just run through my playbook. That's not what we want. But we do need someone to help bring us together and ask questions and probe and have some ideas. So that's what I'm hoping or expecting. Um, so I think we need to, you know.
We need to do most of the talking, not the speaker.
Absolutely, yeah.
I mean.
But he needs to make sure that he's also making sure that everybody has that opportunity.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Um, if he hears something that, he hears something going certain way, he might say, I want to make sure I'm hearing this correctly. Uh, this is what you're saying and making sure that we have that. So though that's, that's what the facilitator shouldn't be doing. Um, if, if he's not the right person, then we can find.
Uh, yeah.
Someone else.
Yeah.
But that's our, at least that's my hesitation.
Yeah, we used the attorney the last couple of times and it's kind of slide, very good, but it's a standard slide deck and, you know, kind of thought people might like to mix it up and go bad. We have, at my time here, I've never used, we'd never used K as a, you know, for a retreat. So, um, but again, Eric's exactly right. If, if he wants to stick to a certain script and we don't like the script, we don't need to use it.
No, no.
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me. I have no qualms about that at all.
It is a definite skill set. Not everyone has that, that.
Yeah.
We do need to find someone who can help us with that.
Agreed. So, uh, okay, this is.
By reluctance, you know, then on this, uh, if anyone comes in and talks, there is a lot of ground where we have to give that first before that. For example, if somebody is going to be affected in that role, they would have to begin with something like a question that says, what is the theory of practice that is guiding the work of your board? And then go through it and help us work through the ideas and evidence to the degree and to the extent that we are executing the theory of practice that we believe is behind our work. Now, the problem with that is most of the time, there's an implicit theory of practice that is disparate among board members. Everybody has their own theory of practice and it's kind of implicitly stated and it kind of complicates everything. So one of the tasks that I think that we would have to do before any facilitators come in and be effective working with them would be for us to make explicit what we each work with implicitly at each of our meetings. Only by having an explicit statement of what we really believe you're about as a board could facilitate the then be effective. So I think there's a lot of work we would have to do before we can engage with the facilitator who would be, who could effectively work with us.
I, I, I don't know. You know, Barry, I've worked with a lot of people facilitated discussions and I, I think if you're, if you're a good facilitator, you can get up to speed pretty quickly. There's some important thing. There's absolutely, Jeff and myself, and hopefully if we collectively, um, come up with some thoughts and ideas and direction over tonight and then hopefully we're going to meet on April 4th. Further discussion and feel free to comment to Jeff and myself prior to that about some thoughts. We can definitely, you know, help shape that is, but I don't, I don't know. Maybe you're not saying that, but I, I don't know that.
Suggestion?
Sure.
He or she could just watch a couple of our board meetings on the recordings and just get a sense of interactions and that might be a way to start with it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I assume that Nick, if he's done this with other boards, we can quickly ask him, how does he prepare?
Yeah, that's, that's the first question, yeah. Yeah, because we know what we're looking for. We need to ask him, okay, how are you going to go about this? Just kind of get a background as to what he's thinking. And then we mold that for how we, we wanted to.
I kind of think it's your wheelhouse. I know Fieser does a lot of this. I think Superintendent Newton, you've done a lot of this. I think, I think I know you don't want to be disciplined in there, but I think that'll be okay. I think, yeah.
We have this stuff in place for the facilitator to work with. I think that facilitator can be effective. If we don't have this stuff in place for the facilitator to work with, it's going to be a waste of time.
Would it be possible to send out potential points of practice of interest and concern to everybody and get some feedback? And synthesize that so that we know what he's, he's receiving and we know what we're expecting.
Thanks, Laura. Abs- absolutely. I mean, that's what I'm hoping today. We can get some thoughts, but also feel free to share. And obviously, just with Jeff and myself, we can't send it to everyone, but if you send thoughts into us, we can also, part of the reason to meet on April 4th is it's a week before the 11th, before our retreat. So we'll have an agenda item to kind of refine and make sure that we're all aligned on. Hey, here's kind of the direction we're going. We can, we can shape it still more then. We have time to shape and, um, and modify at that point about what we're hoping.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Lee and then Candace?
Yeah, um, I was thinking something.
You're breaking up.
Lee, we lost Jeff.
She froze.
Lee, Lee, we're going to pause on you if you can hear us. And Candace, do you want to go? We're having trouble hearing you. So maybe your the wifi will fix, uh, in time. Why don't we go to Candace first and then to back to it?
Yeah, Lee, you can try actually logging off and then come, and then coming back in. I know that I was having trouble earlier. Um, I'm hoping everybody can hear me, uh, well.
Yeah, you're, well, yeah.
Okay, so, um, I can't agree more with Laura's idea. I think that that was fantastic. Um, I think that the whole thought of, and, and maybe I'm wrong, but, um, I'm thinking that we're bringing someone in to help us, right? To help, um, each one of us, uh, be, uh, work a little bit, uh, more unified together. At least, at least that's what I'm seeing is needed. I've been on the board for a long time, um, and there have been times when it hasn't been very cohesive. And then there's been times when it's been a, a well-oiled machine. And then there are times when we're stagnant, uh, and then there's lots of, um, you know, troubled water. So, um, you know, and even just listening on the conversation about bringing a facilitator in has been back and forth and back and forth. It's almost as though everybody wants to be the captain of the ship. And the bottom line is, is we have 10 board members um, that I think that some could really benefit, uh, to, to hear, uh, different strategies uh, to help all of us work, uh, together in more of a cohesive fashion so that we can progress and prosper and move forward um, and continue to be, uh, the fantastic district that we, that we are, uh, truly. So I'm looking forward to the, to the workshop and I would, um, certainly be in favor of answering any questions or, you know, um, a little bit of tidbits to the facilitator. Um, if, if that's what you'd like, uh, but, um, I'm all in. So I'm looking forward to it. Thanks, everybody.
Candace, Lee, let's try Lee again.
You guys hear me this time?
Much better, yes.
Right. Um, excuse me. So, uh, yeah, I just wanted to, to share, I'm a, a huge fan of, of what Laura, um, put out there. I think it's a fantastic idea. And when I've been a part of similar workshops with different groups in the past, um, and this is something that the facilitator might want to do or might not want to do, but sending out some like pre-work survey questions where folks can, uh, submit a survey response around where we think we're doing well as a board, where we think we need to grow as a board. And it's pretty illuminating to see where we're aligned and where we're not. And so if the facilitator does think that having some baseline data, um, on that, I think doing that as pre-work could be helpful. So just help us dive right in, uh, once we get to the workshop.
Great. Thanks, Lee. Other discussions? So, um.
We are going to bring this person in for the day. I think the person should be able to say as a result of the session, here is the specific rule that will be the outcome of the meeting. Because if it's a session where we're just going to talk broadly about, uh, interest, desire, whatever it's going to be, we have to have a very focused, um, recent objective for the session. And with, uh, whatever process we use that the facilitator beforehand, we can give that to them. What I hope that the outcome it would be something the facilitator has said, doing all the input that you provided, here is my sense of the goal or the purpose of that day. And when we end up with a session, here's what we'll be able to put on the table.
I think that, I mean, I think within reason, I mean, some of it, you know, is, I, I, I want to make sure we spend some time, you know, one of both team building or uh, forming or whatever, where we, you know, kind of work together and, you know, we're, we're a new team and spend a little time on that. Desired outcome for that is that we get to know each other more. I don't know. I don't know that there's going to always be a tangible, um, result, but I think I agree that to some extent, we want, we don't want to just have a, a couple hour, a few hour meeting and then, you know, April 11th, we talked for a few hours and then nothing changes and you just end up the next meeting, whenever it is. Uh, we just kind of go back. So it has to have impact, um, for us going forward.
Melissa? Yeah. So this would be my first board retreat. So I'm welcoming, um, participating in it like a hundred percent. Those two pieces. So, you know, one kind of the, uh, just kind of learning the dynamics of the board. I think it is adds value to kind of assess the current state. And, and find out kind of where everybody is at. Um, you know, I think in the short time that I've been here, you know, there, there are, um, you know, there's, there's certainly no shortage of, um, kind of backgrounds and very sort of diverse board. Um, and you know, so to, so, you know, I think it is critical, right, that there's, um, areas of alignment and that we kind of, you know, figure out where we are now so that we can identify those objectives of, you know, what's going to make this board the best operating where we can, we can have.
Thanks, Melissa. Other thoughts? So why don't we do this? Um, you know, we have the Board of Finance presentation tonight. If everyone can, I, I really, I like, I really like the idea of the service. I think, you know, if you want to talk to Nick or something, or we can talk to Nick, depending, but just to feel, maybe there's, there might be a feel out, like, have you done this for a lot of other groups? What have you done? How do you think about it before we kind of go too far down that path? And if he's not the right person, there's probably other people out there who we can find, um, who might be better that, that maybe people have experience with. Facilitating. And then I, I, you know, I, I like the idea of the survey. I like the idea of everyone submitting. So maybe in the, the meantime, if everyone can send Jeff, one of our Jackie, to you.
No, to be frank.
Okay, to Jeff, um, some of your thoughts on what, um, as you, you think about the board, think about, you know, what are areas that, um, you'd like us to focus on over the next one to three years, um, as, as a board? I'd like to say, you know, what, you know, what do you think as a board that we're doing that we're functioning well and that's going well? And then what are some areas that maybe we can improve as a board? And anything else, but those are probably three, you know, for me, three key topics that I'd like to make sure that we kind of cover, um, during the retreat.
Would it be helpful if, I don't know if you recall back when we, in our last retreat, we developed a bulleted list um, I could, uh, Tim had kind of put that together, I think, and we use that as kind of a template. I'm happy to find that and send that back.
What were those, of things we wanted?
It was, yeah, different, as we think of the future, um, things we want to focus on. We had a whole list. I could look at it first if you want.
Okay, yeah, my only concern, because we had at one point this list of like 27 items.
There was a lot. We narrowed it down some.
And some of them, they were everything from.
It was everything.
Like, little, like, I don't know, let's meet at seven o'clock instead of six o'clock to, we need to develop a new curriculum on, you know, it's like the, the range was pretty broad. So that was my only con. So what I'd like for the one to three year is, is more of the strategic thinking, um, not less of the tactical. Hey, it'd be great if as a board, we met at six instead of six, or six thirty instead of six or seven instead, like those things. Uh, we can address, but we can address those more as a, as a board, kind of, long ago. But I, I'd like to more think about like, now that we're hopefully, you know, out of, or, or at a different point in the, the pandemic, and I guess it's endemic at this point, uh, or will be, um, that we can now start really thinking about what are, are topics that we want to make sure that every agenda, you know, has a topic that's kind of meaty and, you know, helping to progress the district. And I think we've spent a lot of time on things that we've had to spend time on over the past couple of years, you know, virtual learning and cohorts to masks or no masks to, you know, there's just a lot of things that we had, we had to address. There were tough things that we had to cover. That's what we've been dealing with for two years. Hopefully we're at another different point of time and now we can start kind of getting back to what's, how do we want to progress the district? What are some of the key areas that we as a board can help push, drive and partner with administration to do?
So I see your hand.
Just real quick, we did a long time ago, a survey where we self evaluated the board. And it, I thought it was great and it gave an, some, a real insight into the board and someone compiled it all or the answers. But we're talking about doing, I don't know if we want to do a survey, but who, who knows where it is, but it was great. It was, you know, I just really liked the questions it asked and I think everyone was pretty honest about putting their thoughts forward. So again, just offering that, I don't know where it is, but who knows? But it, I thought it was a great tool.
Great. Thanks, Joe. I think that's kind of aligns with what Lee was saying as well. Maybe there is this pre-survey, something that we can collect some information going into the meeting as well. Eric.
I think I have paused that channel, whether we're doing well or not doing some disturbing, because it's going to end up with a hot slide that's stuck all over the board. I would be much more in favor with the question that says, what are ideas of how we are going to be the very best district in the state? Because I think as a board, we are very task oriented. We have a job to do. Our job is to help us become the very, very best district in the state. But I think the survey should be something as specific of that rather than looking in the mirror and trying to reflect. I think we should be much more focused on what is the path we have to have a board and how to be a board. Board is very, almost easily, you've made us the very, very best district in the state.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I mean, sure. I mean, I, I don't know what others say. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's one way. That's, that's kind of that, for me, maybe it's just saying it differently is that's that one to three year strategic, what can we do to make a difference? I, I personally shy away from right now, like this five or 10 year look. I'm a little worried that we just came out of a major change in what we were doing and I don't know that we're ready for a five or 10 year look. I think that the kind of, what can we do that makes a significant impact in the next one to three years? And over then, the next year or two, hopefully we're in a spot that we can start looking at. Maybe a three or five year plan or something like that. That's, that's where I am at least.
We could do that board meeting by board meeting, figure out each board meeting, move it forward, being the very best district in the state. And one of the things with facilitators, I do not want to work with somebody who looks at us just as, just good muscle. That facilitator that's coming here works with us with the sole purpose of saying, this is a board that wants to be the very, very best in the state and does not bring us in with stuff. Well, here's what some other boards have done. And that's a board that's kind of sitting in the middle of the field. I don't want to be in the middle of the field. We have to be basically upfront and in front of every other board in the state. And that's where I would like to see us go in this.
Could I ask, do you have to be, I guess, maybe it's more my perspective, but I think you do, but I'll ask a question. Reflective upon yourselves as a, as a board to be more cohesive as a group before? You can go do that work?
We're talking means and ends, but I think, you know, we have a solid purpose and we want to be the very best cohesion house. Because we're all working for the same goal. If we're not all working for the same goal, everybody has, I want to do this, I want to do this.
That's, that's where you need the cohesion first, I think.
Yeah.
So if we have a clear focus to say, we want to be the very best board in the state, then we get together on common agendas that when we have discussions and we have action, the question everyone knows is to say, how is this particular agenda this board meeting tonight? Helping us become the very best district in the state. How is the work on this stuff? How is the work on this budget? How is the work on this? I wish, helping us become the very best state. That's where the cohesion comes.
Okay.
Yeah, please. Idea of being the best in the state, for me, having come from a background in both some districts. Districts are best in different ways. And I think we need to have a conversation about what do we want to be best at? Often the public sees test scores. I don't think that's what it means to be the best. You know, there's lots of parameters and I think that's, that's setting the priorities. And what do we want to be the best at? Because we cannot be the best in athletics, academics, teacher.
But we have to get front of it. What does it mean by that?
Sorry, Laura.
But I still, I'm just going to soak. That works. Going to go back to, and I'm going to put it out there. I, I think, you know, before you get there, Barry, you got to have a cohesive board that's not going to spin their wheels in the mud and have a lot of disagreements or a thing. We're, we're not in sync as a board right now. So.
I don't think we have a common, you know, we're not united in like where we're going.
That, that's what the retreat purpose, I think, is all about, to work to get us better in sync so we can do the things that you're talking about.
We have to like where we're going, but I think we have very.
So, Barry, can I just, so Barry, I have to ask you a question. If we asked our 10 board members, what would it mean to be the best district, best board of ed slash best district in the state?
How we get there, what it is and how we get there.
You're going to have 10 different responses to that. And 10 different ideas, totally different thoughts.
Right. We understand. So how does that?
There's a bigger piece that's missing of the cohesion of the board and openness and trust and building trust amongst yourselves as, as a team.
So you're Barrett. Barry, you're saying that if we all have the same goal, then cohesion will follow.
Another version of.
I respectfully disagree with that. I mean, you obviously have more education and more, are more experienced in a lot of different things than I thought. But I, I think there's an emotional component that we need to address. Maybe I'm being too much of my social worker, but, but I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but just don't, I don't think that would follow.
Does anybody mind if I chime in very quickly? I'm just listening. And I, I'd like to agree with Jeff 150% and Jill Karini, just some of the few comments that she just stated. I, I, I've actually said this often, that I truly appreciate the fact that when I sit at a table, that each and every person is bringing their own perspective to the table. Because at the end, we are going to get to where we need to be or where we should be. If everyone is thinking the same and navigating the same, and if they're not the same, then people are, what I have been viewing and what I have been sensing and seeing on our board is that if you don't swim the way I swim, then you're almost attacked. And that's just not working for us. So I know for myself, what I'm looking for going into this workshop, I think that, you know, each one of us need to look inside and, and be honest when we come to the table. But there's also a level of respect that I truly believe is lacking on our board. And I think that it's causing us to not work as in sync as we have in the past, often in the past years. And I think that it's affected us greatly. So I'm hopeful that by having some honest dialogue, not scripted, with the full focus of, of putting our children and anyone and everyone that's underneath our district umbrella at the forefront. So I, I listened to the best board in the state. I actually think that we rate pretty high as a board in the state, at least Cave has said so. And, and we've certainly been looked at as leaders here in the state of Connecticut for boards. So I think that that's fantastic. But again, internally, I think that if, if anyone was asked and, you know, they just came back with, oh, we just are functioning fantastically, that wouldn't be very truthful. Okay? I think that it's fair to say that we really need to, to sit down with the mediator and a facilitator to really kind of help guide us to kind of get through this little hiccup of a part that we found ourselves in. Each and every member, you know, I think really needs to respect other members that are part of our group and our, our board, whether or not they're Republican or Democrat, they're male or female, they're whatever, whatever it is. Because it's, it's, it's hindering us. So I, I'm hoping that we can, we can really get a lot from the workshop and maybe do some work ahead of time so that we're ready and, and prepared and, and work cohesively together to get as much out of it as we possibly can to better our board and better our district.
Thanks, Candace. Okay, so I'm going to, to wrap up, because we do need to keep moving along. So Jeff and I will take the action to make sure that our facilitator is one that we think will be, be able to facilitate the session well. If each person can send to Jeff their thoughts again, that one to three year look, what are some things that you want to progress as, as a district, as a board, as well as things that you think we're doing well and things that where we think we can improve just to get some foundation, doesn't have to be elaborate as bullets, whatever. I think that will also help the facilitator, help us and help this facilitator. And then we'll see if the facilitator wants to do a pre questionnaire, if that's kind of their norm, seems that it would make some sense. But we'll see. We'll talk with them. And we will, we do have, on the fourth, we have a meet, we'll have a meeting, a special meeting. And at that meeting, we will have this as an agenda topic, just to give us another chance to make sure before we go and spend a few hours on a retreat, that we've kind of somewhat aligned on, on the purpose and the goals of the retreat. Thanks, everyone. I think a really good input that closes the discussion and action items for tonight, moving on administrative reports. Is there any?
We didn't prepare any just yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
And had no committee meetings. Right? No, right? Okay. And we're on board comments. Any board comments?
I was really pleased to see what that Casey, what was it enough about the work that was done for Ukraine? I'm really excited about that. And then the opioid thing, I spoke with somebody recently about that, you know, crisis. I think I just, a shout out to the Jeff, I'm trying to remember his last name or.
Jeff Beal.
Beal, amazing, beautiful work that you're doing here. And then a question for the report that you did, Emily. I was just kind of taken aback by the discrepancy and maybe this is an FFO question between, you know, title line, the spending for the males versus the females and all the sports activities and what that was out of pocket.
Parent, this is parent spend.
Okay, by the district. Okay.
Okay, so. But that's still really interesting to me how that pans out. Is that something that's?
I think it ends up some of the sport, like boys lacrosse, yeah, which was one of the big ones.
No, I'm just curious. I don't understand.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, yeah. So for boys lacrosse, you have helmet pads and other things. For girls lacrosse, it's goggles and a stick. So both the sticks are about the same, what my kids play with. So both the sticks are about the same price. For girls, there's like a $20, $30 pair of goggles. For boys, the helmet's like $250 to $300. Then you get shoulder pads, you might have elbow pads, you have gloves that could be a hundred dollars. You got, so you start, it just starts adding up and up and up.
I'm asking because I don't know. I'm not.
Yeah, so it's not, it's, it's not, I would assume like baseball and softball, I assume like their bats are. Yeah, they're ridiculous. They've gotten crazy during that. So I would think baseball and softball are probably the same. I know lacrosse, you get a huge differential and just.
Lots are about $700, bats are $700, shoes that would be like $200.
Yeah, and those are parent expenses.
And yeah, I mean, it is an approximation because we, you know, I met Steve Hargis who said, okay, how many times out of a kid's lacrosse high school career does he need to replace his pads, you know? So it was, it's really a very, it's a, it's a, it was a tough approximation. I did my best to kind of get a sense of what it would be annually for, you know?
Pretty good. No, I appreciate it.
And I know, Barry, you asked for the middle school, which I'm, I'm working on that and working on getting the information from middle school and I'll, I'll follow up on that.
I appreciate the report. I think it's informative. Just sometimes I'm like, why is that?
Yeah, when you add it up and you think.
Well, I got a good ballet, so. Yeah, it was completely out of pocket. So, right. And they go through shoes every two weeks.
Any other board comments, Barry?
Just as usual, I hope that in future board meetings, we can start having agenda topics that focus in on students and students.
Other board comments? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
One second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, we are adjourned and maybe we'll see everyone tonight.